Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing now convenes this public hearing. Public hearing notice were given to the media on Wednesday, April 24th, second notice on one May, and today is Friday, the 3rd of May. It is now 1:04. The committee will hear and accept testimony both oral and written on the following: Bill Number 79-35 as introduced by Senator Sabina Perez, myself, Speaker Tina Barnes, Senator Telo Tidigui, Senator Luis Buñia, Senator Will Castro, Senator James Moynihan, Senator Jose Pito Terlay, and Senator Kelly Marsh Tytenow. An act to add, Section 1512.4 to Title V Guam Code Antedote relative to authorizing the Governor of Guam, Imaga Haga Guam, to issue government of Guam bonds for the purpose of financing a new landfill sale for LaZon. I'd like to acknowledge senators that have joined me, the author of the bill, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator James Moynihan. The conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows: Those testifying will be recognized in the order of the signing. On the sign sheet, written testimony be read; lengthy written testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to the substance. Person will be allowed to present oral testimony once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for additional question or for additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the panel. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name for the record. We will now begin hearing testimony. But first, I would ask the author of the bill to please present her opening statement on the bill. Senator Sabina Perez.
Thank you so much, Chairmen Sinagastin and Senator James Moynihan, for being here today. I would like to thank everyone here today who has come to this public hearing, including the members of the governor's team, whose tireless work and expertise crafted the favorable financial terms incorporated in this bill. Bill 79-35 is an important bill for our people and for our island. It finances the construction of a new cell at LaZon, protecting our environment from a potential disaster when the landfill runs out of space in two years. It also provides financing that ends the receivership of Guam Solid Waste Authority and does so without raising rates. Since 2008, Guam Solid Wastes have been under court-ordered receivership. The receivership was due to end by December 2017, but the handover was repeatedly delayed over the court's concerns and GovGuam's ability to handle the financing and operations of solid waste services. This year, Judge Chief Judge Tadinco Gatewood made clear that, as a final step to ending receivership, GovGuam must finance an expansion of the LaZon landfill. With the finish line in sight, the governor assembled a team to develop a final financing plan. In numerous meetings, I witnessed some of the best of our government in action. Even our federal counterparts were impressed by the progress, expressing to Judge Tadinco Gatewood in the court that GovGuam is now moving with lightning speed. These efforts resulting in Bill 79-35 allow Judge Tadinco Gatewood to end our decade-long receivership. Mr. Chairman, Bill 79-35 authorizes GovGuam to issue one or more series of bonds for an aggregate amount not to exceed $30 million to finance the construction of the new cell at LaZon landfill. Because the market is wary of Guam Solid Waste Authority's recent receivership, the bonds are backed by government of Guam in order to obtain more favorable borrowing terms. But these bonds are still paid for by revenues collected from services provided by Guam Solid Waste Authority. Interest rates are not to exceed 6%, but the given current market rates, the fiscal team estimates borrowing at under 4%. The maturity date will be in 12 years, although I believe it's going to be 12.5 years, which corresponds with two years of construction and the 10-year lifespan of the new cell. This bill is critical in demonstrating to the Department of Justice, USCPA, and the courts that we are capable of regaining control of solid waste services. We cannot risk the ire of the court or the return to the receiver by failing to finance the expansion of LaZon. Without the receiver, we can then pursue competitive contracts, reduce costs, and ensure the best value of our funds. Timing is of the essence. LaZon landfill is expected to reach full capacity in two years. Bear in mind, the construction of a new cell takes two years, so we must secure financing and begin construction before this rainy season starts. Otherwise, we face a significant environmental threat in just two years. We must finance the expansion of LaZon. We can either borrow under reasonable terms and without raising rates, as outlined in this bill, or we can reject the bill and pay for construction through immediate extreme rate increases. Borrowing is never easy, but for capital improvement projects, it's a prudent course of action. Our constituents elected us to make tough, sound financial decisions. The bill before us today provides a path that expands LaZon while protecting rate payers. I thank the eight co-sponsors for their bipartisan support, and the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing for hearing the bill today. And I thank my remaining colleagues, who I hope will support this measure once their questions are answered. I also thank the governor, her fiscal team, the Guam Solid Waste Authority, GIDA, Department of Administration, BBMR, USCPA, Guam EPA, the Office of the Attorney General of Guam, and the receivers and their legal team that helped to forge a final financing plan for their collaborative efforts in crafting this plan. Our island is ready to step up and take responsibility for our solid waste services. Bill 79-35 will help end receivership, protect the rate payers and the environment, and take back our landfill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Perez. I'd like to also recognize Senator, the presence of Senator Teresa Terlay and Senator Amanda Shelton. We will now begin testimony with the GIDA Director. Ma'am?
How do I, Chairmen Sinagastin and distinguished members of the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing? My name is Melanie Mendiola, and I'm the CEO/Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority, GIDA. And on behalf of the Governor of Guam and the Governor's Fiscal Discipline Team, I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill 79-35 relative to authorizing the Governor of Guam to issue government of Guam bonds for the purpose of financing a new landfill sale for the LaZon landfill. Bill 79-35 proposes to fund a New Cell 3 at the LaZon landfill pursuant to the US District Court requirement related to the Guam Solid Waste Consent decree. We are before you today as a testament to the willingness of the Leon Guero Tenoio Administration to take full responsibility and control of Guam's solid waste collection and disposal activities. It has been less than two months since Governor Leon Guero attended her first district court hearing on this matter. Through her guidance and desire to demonstrate our government's ability to promote, protect, and maintain a commercially viable and environmentally sound landfill, we have made great strides in addressing many issues with the federal government and the district court that for many years were hotly debated yet never resolved. Bill 79-35 is a milestone in finally achieving this goal. We thank Senator Sabina Perez, as well as the co-sponsors of Bill 79-35, who recognize that without this authorization to secure funds for a New Cell 3 at the LaZon landfill, the government of Guam would not be able to take this huge step closer to regaining responsibility of our solid waste operations. With the end of the receivership's authority over day-to-day operations of the Guam Solid Waste Authority that occurred on April 30th, 2019, as ordered by District Court Judge Francis Tadinco Gatewood, and the imminent transfer of the responsibilities for post-closure care for the audit dump on the horizon, the passage of Bill 79-35 will guarantee that we can fund and construct the New Cell 3, which is vital to ensure there continues to be a place to safely collect and dispose of our island's waste. The proposed methods of financing the New Cell 3 was produced by the Financing Plan Collaborative Team and approved by Judge Tadinco Gatewood, with the caveat that legislative approval be secured. The Financing Plan Collaborative Team, the FPCT, is composed of a number of stakeholders, many handpicked by Governor Leon Guero herself. They include: The Office of the Governor is represented by its Legal Counsel and Chief Advisor on Fiscal Discipline. Bureau of Budget and Management Research is represented by its Director, who is here today, Mr. Lester Carlson. Department of Administration is represented by its Director, Mr. Edward Byrne, who is also present today. GSWA is represented by its Board Chairman, Mr. Andrew Gale, General Manager Larry Gast, and Controller Catherine Kakegi. GIDA is represented by its CEO and Admin, myself. Our Deputy Administrator, Artemio Ricky Hernandez, and Public Finance Manager, Tina Garcia. Gershman Brinker and Bratton, GBB, the receiver, as represented by Mr. David Manning and his Legal Counsel, Ms. Joyce Tang. Through the FPCT's coordination and efforts, the financing plan contained in Bill 79-35 was driven mainly by the time in which funds would be needed for the construction of the New Cell 3, which, according to the receiver, will require two dry seasons to construct, whereby construction would need to commence in July of 2019. Additionally, landfill cells 1 and 2 are projected to be at full capacity by 2021, which is also a major factor in the determination of the financing plan. Timeliness was the main driver that led to the decision to seek the authorization as proposed in the bill and Bill 79-35 after having considered other, more time-consuming alternatives. Bill 79-35 presents two financing options: A general obligation bond or a construction loan. Since having presented the New Cell 3 financing plan to Senator Perez and the district court on April 5th, the government of Guam has decided to pursue bond issuance as opposed to the loan approach, due to the estimated interest cost of a construction loan being 6%, whereas the estimated interest for a GO bond is 3.78%. The projected interest rate of 6% for construction loan was based on GIDA's recent past experience in issuing an RFP and a request for proposal for similar loan financing for a construction project with even more favorable terms, such as a $9.2 million project amount and a three-year term, which yielded an offering percentage of 6%. So in our testimony, we submitted a table with the comparison. Under the bond financing, you have a monthly payment of approximately $261,600, an annual payment of $3.1 million, and a total interest payment of $7.7 million. Whereas with a construction loan, you're looking at a monthly payment of $290,000, an annual payment of approximately $3.5, and a total interest payment of $11.8 million. So if you compare the difference, it's quite a difference. Nonetheless, we wanted to submit those to you for your consideration. Other key considerations for the proposed financing included: The government of Guam will issue a GO bond in order to secure the best interest rates and terms. Although GSWA has been in operation for numerous years, a lack of GSWA operational history will be a hindrance in securing reasonable, cost-effective, and timely financing on its own. The solid waste tipping fees revenue will be the primary source of repayment of the debt service, with deposits made to a bond trustee on a monthly basis. The projected interest rate of 3.78% for bond financing is based upon current market conditions derived in consultation with the government of Guam's bond underwriters. Mr. Chair, with concurrence from all the members of the Governor's Fiscal Discipline Team, we'd like to offer one amendment to the introduced Bill 79-35. Section 1C, beginning on line 26, revised to read "no later than the date 12 and 1/2 years," 12.5 years. And similarly, in Section 3, beginning on line 18, revised to read "no later than the date 12 and 1/2 years," 12.5 years. And this is primarily just, this is a timing, this is kind of an administrative clerical thing with regard to the timing of payments of the bond. Mr. Chair and members of this committee, we are at the cusp of regaining control and responsibility over our solid waste operations that the government lost over a decade ago. With your support for Bill 79-35, we can all be a part of this movement of change led by our Maga Haga Governor Leon Guero, and prove not only to the district court and the US Environmental Protection Agency, but to ourselves and our island, that we are a government that will ensure the protection of our environment, our natural resources, and the health of our residents. Once again, we thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in full support of Bill 79-35. I, along with the members of the Governor's Fiscal Discipline Team and GSWA, are prepared to answer any questions you may have at this time. Sejuzmasi.
My colleagues, we received testimony from, or written testimony from PUC. Let me see. Let me find that. We received testimony not only from PUC, but also from Mr. Gast in support of the bill. I think most of our testimonies were all in support, other than PUC asking for them to be the approving authority first. Well, the legislative agency will decide what authority. We just want to get this thing done. I think that's the goal, and it'll be all provided. Does any of my colleagues have any questions for the GIDA Director? Start with Senator Amanda Shelton. Do you have any questions? You're okay, Senator Terlay?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Melanie. Can I ask you a couple of things? One is, so GSWA is swearing they can pay this with their fees, and it's not going to impact their operations, but we all know they're just beginning their operations. Have you also looked at their operations and estimates and that type of thing? And do you share that concurrence that they are going to be able to do what they need to do with the fees without having to raise fees to take care of this obligation?
Well, primarily, I can speak to the, we were, GIDA was provided with pro forma financials, which we then used, and you know, basically a forecast of the coming years, which we used as a forecast to determine what was affordable to the organization, to the agency. And this was what was determined to be affordable to the agency without raising tipping fees.
For the duration?
That's correct.
And what about PUC's testimony? As GIDA has experience with agencies also helping them with their bonds, and those agencies that are also subject to PUC? Is that right? Are those, those are some of the autonomous agencies?
That's correct. So this is a general obligation bond, a GO bond. And so a GO bond typically is not subject to PUC. I will defer, however, to our BBMR Director to answer that question.
Yeah, Lester, if I may, just ask you, my own, I understand what PUC wants, and that it, I remember this with GPA, they had to go through PUC, but is that going to increase the calculations of costs? For example, I know PUC, they like to do their own studies and that type of thing. Would that impact what GSWA has said that they could afford this without raising fees, I guess?
Thank you very much, Senator Terlay. Your experience and your recollection is on point. PUC does charge a fee. They do retain consultants. Those consultants, their fees are paid for by either GPA, GWA. So your recollection is on point, and yes, there would be a cost consideration. I would submit, though, that we do understand, and we do appreciate and respect the role of the PUC. We're currently, unfortunately, still under receivership. And so the statement about the other utilities requiring PUC approval prior to the issue is absolutely correct. However, none of them were under receivership. Consent decrees are different than receivership. We violated a consent decree that we went into receivership. So we understand and we fully respect that in the future. The PUC will be playing a vital role in the rate setting for GSWA. Everybody here at the table, and including the financing plan that Ms. Mendiola referred to, which was submitted to the court, reviewed by the court, and approved by the court, does indicate and show the ability to make the ORDOT post-closure payments, as well as the debt service while still operating the utility under the current rate structure.
Thank you both. Yeah, I, sorry about that. Thank you. I appreciate, yeah, maybe the many opinions as possible on that. That's what we really want to feel comfortable about, that for the duration, we are going to be looking at the same fees to consumers, and hopefully not get one of those decisions that says, like, PUC, you know, that says we have to raise the rates in order to match, or to meet all these obligations. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Terlay. Thank you, Lester, for recognizing that if we gave it to PUC to decide, Mr. Gast would probably try to figure out where we're going to get the money, we need to get a borrower money. I think we just need to figure this out. If it's in the best interest of the people of Guam, GIDA, go get the loan, get it going. They want to talk about the rates later, PUC, you can get involved in that point. We don't have a lot of money, and we want to get the biggest bang of our dollar, not spread it out. Senator Moynihan, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just going in line with Senator Terlay's question there, so understanding that the tipping fees are the primary source to pay out this debt, and then clarifying that there is, from GSWA, there is no need to increase the tipping fees. The number of households doing the tipping fees versus the number of households that are not, I've heard the number once before, but would you have an idea of the total numbers of the tipping fees? Oh, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Gast is here. If you could please, sir, join us, because you're the man in charge now. It's going to be.
Welcome.
Letting us know, sir.
We have approximately 19,000 residential units that we service on a weekly basis. Larry Gast, I'm the General Manager of the Guam Solid Waste Authority.
Well, hello. I didn't know that either. Sorry.
Now, one of the things that we have that's different than a lot of other organizations, we're directly impacted by the economic outlook for the future. If the economy goes down, people start buying less stuff and throwing less stuff away, so the tonnage goes down, so the revenue goes down. As long as the economy is good, everything keeps growing and the revenue starts increasing. That's the only thing I can't guarantee is what future revenues will be. As long as you anticipate a flat or increasing economy, then you can generally predict that you're going to have increasing revenues as you go.
I'm sorry, the total number of households paying their tipping fees, would you have a, versus the total number of households that are not paying their tipping fees?
We're servicing about half, and if we could get the other half in, it would not be as expensive as the original half, because we're already going down the roads, and this house uses our service, this house doesn't. So, you know, we're already going by their residences but are not servicing them.
Would you have a recommendation on how we can get that other half to participate?
One of the ways to get everybody to participate is what most of the counties in Florida have is called mandatory garbage collection. And each property owner of a residential unit is required to have garbage collection. And by doing so, that eliminates a lot of the litter issues, it eliminates a lot of the illegal dumping issues, it eliminates a lot of problems that are associated with people trying to find out how to get rid of garbage without paying for it. That makes the owner of the property responsible for making sure that the solid waste is taken care of, that they're rental units or they're residential units.
And in that state, how do they make those, how does the customer make that payment? How is that done?
That is generally done as a non-ad valorem assessment on their tax bill for their property taxes.
So I suppose if we increase the number of households that participate, we can expedite the payment off for our loan?
We could expedite the payment, or we could start putting money away for the next cell that's going to be required in 12 years, to where we don't have to borrow again in the future.
I'm hoping you also have recommendations where we can, other than a cell, there's some other new technology that we can look at as well.
There are new technologies out there. There has been plasma arc gasification technology, has been around for about 20 years. So far, the three commercial entities that have tried it on a commercial basis have all failed, but there's a pilot program going on in Pennsylvania that has been doing plasma arc gasification for 20 years, but it's only doing 20 tons from a very limited supplier. The problem with trying to do some of the newer technologies with garbage is that today it's nice, sunny, and dry. Your garbage is fairly dry. Tomorrow, you have two inches of rain, guess what? Your garbage is soaking wet, so they have to keep tweaking the electronics on these sophisticated programs. If everything was the same as it came in, it would be easy to do, but since you have a variety of environmental factors that affect what happens when you collect waste, it's hard to have the same moisture content every time you make a delivery to a facility.
Would you know, in your research in Asia, is there some countries that we can look at as an example?
The gasification was done in Japan. It lasted three years, had continuous technical difficulties, and because of the issue of having technical difficulties, they lost customers, and before they could get everything done, they basically became insolvent. Air Gas in England constructed one facility and started operation and began the construction of their second facility, and both of them were going to be doing 1,000 tons a day, but they could not get the first facility to work, and because they could not get the first facility to work, they abandoned the second and sold both of them for scrap metal.
Thank you very much.
Senator Shelton, I think you found your question.
Thank you, yes, I was taking a look. So Mal, in your testimony, you said an estimated interest rate of 3.78%, and then in the fiscal note, it says here 4%. So I'm wondering, is it necessary that we give ourselves the cushion at 6.0%? Or should we put it at 4.0%? What the estimate is?
Generally, when you're going out for any type of debt, you do want to be prudent, and you do want to make sure you have sufficient cushion in the event that the way you plan it doesn't end up being the way it is. And so I think leaving, I think bringing it down from a 6% cap to a 4% cap would be a little tight, and there would be additional pressure on the, on the team to be able to procure a rate lower than, while we are comfortable at that rate, it's, it would be a much more challenging situation for us to come back and have to amend the bill to increase it by 50 or 100 basis points.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Carlson, I know that in the Guam Code, it requires that if we go out for any general obligation bond for GovGuam that exceeds $25 million, we have to put the question to the voters of Guam. So is this something that we have a legal opinion on? That we don't pose this question to the people, this debt?
Thank you very much, Senator Shelton. This waiver that's contained on page 8, beginning on line 24, has sufficed on a number of occasions for bond issuances, including all the BPT bonds. I would submit that, again, harkening back to the chairman's comments and the comments of everybody here, we're unfortunately under a really, really tight time crunch. So the bill does provide for acknowledgement of the law and a waiver of that requirement.
Before I ask Senator Terlay for her follow-up, I just, Mr. Gast, when you mentioned if everybody was paying, so in other words... was paying, so in other words, I think that I'll pass that over to the Oversight Chair of Revenue and Tax to maybe ask Revenue and Tax, how many tax, how many landowners we have that have a home on it? And then make it part of, like you mentioned, part of the tax collection, the property tax? That's what you're saying, right? How it's collected in the mainland?
That is correct. And one of the advantages of that is you're pretty much like a utility then, because you've got guaranteed revenue coming in. You know, everybody's got to get their water, everybody's got to get their electricity, but everybody is not getting garbage collection.
Okay. But at the same token, if you're saying currently, half of the total residents today are paying, and the other half isn't, if we got everybody that owns a home, or owns apartment, or whatever, is hooked up to pay for disposal of trash, we could actually pay this bond off in half the time, or even even faster, and actually, like you said, have collection and be able to prepare to stop, prevent, or reduce the amount of litter. That's what you're proposing, right?
It will reduce the amount of litter. It won't double our revenues, because only about 40% of the revenue comes from household situations. The 60% comes from our commercial entities, all the hotels, restaurants, apartment buildings, those kinds of things. What we look at for residential collection is basically units less than four, connected units, and single-family homes. And with that setup, that's the way that most of the residential collection is done. If you start going into apartment complexes...
No, they'll be separate. That's the industry of its own.
Right. The placement of a dumpster is easier than having 500 carts that people got to carry up the stairs and things like that. So the commercial operation fits better for the multifamily residential units.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Senator Tullai?
Thank you. Melanie, can you just remind us, so are we currently under, paying for a bond already for LaZan? Are those from the revenues?
No.
Not at all?
So are we currently paying for a bond and paying for LaZan? No.
So how was LaZan financed?
Senator, we're asking for authorization to get a bond.
No.
Oh, the prior one?
Yes.
Oh, no, no.
I'm asking if this is on top of something that we're currently, we're currently paying on the original bond to build LaZan, right?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. And so does this like double the amount of revenue that's going to be taken away from GSWA to pay off the bond? Or just what kind of percentage of their potential operations are we looking at?
Currently, the...
And those come out of fees, sorry, Lester. That original bond is being paid by fees?
Okay. Yeah, that was the original arrangement?
Yes.
We went out to the market in 2009, and we were supposed to be getting 75.92% of the cost reimbursed through the system. We were getting that reimbursement up until April of 2014, and then the federal court interceded and basically de-obligated the receiver from providing the Government of Guam the reimbursement. So as you might well remember, ma'am, we used to appropriate the reimbursement, and then it got to be futile because we weren't getting it. So for the last, I think, three fiscal years, including the upcoming fiscal year, the 2016 now, because we refinanced part of it, is still being paid for by the Government of Guam.
Okay, so, yeah, and there was discussion during the last fiscal year about reverting that cost to the GSWA fees, right? Or kind of taking that out of that? But that would not be feasible anymore if we go for this bond? That's correct. So that would be like a permanent obligation of the general fund?
That will be a permanent obligation, unfortunately.
All right. And then, just one more thing, Ms., for solid waste, I know, so you're saying you're calculating a growth in our economy, and for you, it would be normal that the trash rate increases just if our economy is healthy? But I know that the Guam EPA has a zero-waste program that they are trying to implement, and I just want to make sure that we've also planned for that type of thing, for recycling and decreasing our output of waste, and so that we're not going to affect, you know, have to have an increase in fees because we've decreased our waste.
Well, one of the first things I'm doing, one of the first things I'm going to be looking at is trying to decrease costs that we've incurred through the receiver. And I understand why these costs are high, because they had a very small team here and had to issue contracts that had to have management of those contracts built into them. So there's extra levels of expense that is built into those contracts. As those contracts expire, I intend to competitively bid those contracts and to assume the portions that we can internally and move that back to employees of Guam rather than subcontractors doing the operations. By doing this, I can eliminate quite a bit of cost and hopefully gain my buffer right there. The way everything should work is for every dollar that comes into the system, the first thing you do is you take the percentage out of that dollar, you put it for future development. You take a percentage out of that, put it for closure. A percentage out of that, put it for long-term care. That was never done. That's what got us into the situation where we entered under a consent order, because nobody put the money away. I intend to follow what the regulations are and start putting money away for future development, putting money away for closure, putting money away for long-term care. If those estimates start going up and the price of construction on Guam starts going up, the original construction estimate was 20 million for this new cell. The only bid we got in was 30. That's the kind of things we can't forecast into the future.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you're also allowing for a reduction of waste from the sources, hopefully, right? That's our long-term plan.
That's, that's correct. And I can give you just an example. When I was with Orange County, which Disney World and Orlando and all of that, before 2008, we were getting about 1.2 million tons a year. Our entire operation was funded off of the revenue from the tipping fees. When 2008 hit and the economy tanked, we dropped down to 750,000 tons a year. So we lost almost 30% of our revenue. We had to take drastic actions, cutting back services, cutting back expenses, prolonging some expenses, pushing stuff out, everything we could till we started getting back to where we were getting a normal revenue stream.
Thank you, Senator Tullai. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to my colleagues for their questions, and thank you for the fiscal team for being here. It was, it was great to work alongside you these past month or so. So I just want to reiterate, Bill 79-35 is an important bill for our island and our people. It finances the construction of the third cell of LaZan, thus protecting our environment from potential disaster when the current cell fills up in two years. It demonstrates, more importantly, it demonstrates to the court, USCPA, and ourselves that our island is ready to take back our landfill. And with Bill 79-35, we're ending receivership, we're protecting our rate pairs and the environment, and we're taking back our operations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Perez. There being no one else that has signed in, and I believe there's no one else that would like to testify. The committee will conclude this public hearing on Bill 79-35. The committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days because of the urgency of this bill. Please address your written testimony to Committee on Government Operation and Housing and submit it via email to senatorjoeasenogson@gmail.com. When I mention a few days, I give it until Tuesday at the latest, and then I'll close up the committee report, so we can get this out as fast as possible. Sisus Massey, for your attendance today and preparation for the public hearing, and for those at home, thank you for watching. It is now 1:44, and this concludes the public hearing. Have a nice day.